Okay, we'll get started with city council meeting tonight. Thank you for joining us, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And we have new lights on the, on the, what do we call that box there? It's pretty good. You know when you're live now, there's no, there's no question. We are on air. Thank, thank you, everybody, for joining us in, in the council chambers and digitally all over the world. Wherever you are, we appreciate everybody's involvement in the public meetings here in Spanish Fork. And just like it has been for twenty-plus years, you can, you can see these live on channel seventeen. And then catch them on YouTube as well. So thanks for everybody being in attendance and, and watching all over the place. Just like we start these meetings out all the time, we do the prayer and the pledge. Councilwoman Beck is assigned the motivational message or prayer. And then Councilman Argyle will lead us in the pledge.
Our dear, kind Father in Heaven, we're so thankful for the opportunity to be gathered here this evening. We're thankful for this beautiful season and the wonderful weather. And we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve. And we're thankful for the residents and the staff that give so much of their time and energy back to lift and love others. We pray for those in our community who are in harm's way or who are saddened that they can be lifted up and, and protected. We pray that thy spirit will be with us this evening as we move forward making decisions. And we're thankful for all the blessings that thou has bestowed upon us. And we say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the audience please rise and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is always a fun time that we get to, to spend at city council when we have employees of the quarter. This is the third quarter that we're in. So we do have three employees that we get to honor today and, and very deserving people as I've read through their bios and, and know who they are. So we'll, we'll start off with the first one, and I don't know who is, who's presenting, Dylan. Is that you, Chris? Chris first.
So, so Dylan Muirbrook is what is called an EIT staff engineer, which EIT stands for engineering training. When you graduate with engineering degree, you have to take this exam called the fundamentals of engineering exam. It's an eight-hour exam, six-hour exam. When, when I was in engineering.
Obviously, it was harder than, right?
It was eight hours.
Maybe it took you eight and he got it done in six.
Did you say way?
I walked up the stairs to go and take the exam and then up the stairs to leave. But after you take that exam, then you start a kind of a four-year process of working under a professional engineer. And then you can take another, is it six hours? Oh, the second one is an eight-hour exam. Anyway, what, if you pass that, then, then they issue you a stamp and you become a professional engineer. So right now Dylan is an EIT staff engineer. He's working towards getting his professional license and stamp. But with that, we recently lost one of our seasoned engineers. And right now it's really hard to hire engineers. And so we've gone pretty much a lot of the summer without a, down one engineer. And a lot of that load of engineering has been shifted to his shoulders as a very capable, but, but he's only been engineer or an EIT for, for how long? When did you graduate? Eight months? So eight months. But he has worked for the city for a long time. He was a, an intern all through college and, and has done a great job. Very, very intelligent, very hardworking. And, and we have relied on him more than we should have. And he's always, always come through, worked long hours, late nights, just trying to make sure he can stay on top of all the transportation projects we had this year. And we had a lot of them. So we're really grateful to him and the great work that he does. I, I rely on him a lot, although I tease him that he, he disagrees with me too much. And I sent him a cartoon over the weekend about what happens to people who disagree with me too much. And there's hell and then there's, what was it, more hell? Extra. Anyway, but that's why he's so good, is he really challenges things and he really makes you to think. And we're really grateful for him, very deserving, so.
You've got to say something, Dylan.
Yeah, or else you, you don't get to really be the employee of the quarter unless you say something. That's what it is.
I am just, I think it's a privilege to work here. I grew up in Spanish Fork and I think I never realized as staff how much you do get to serve. You are all here to serve the residents, right? And as staff, it's kind of just a job. But I think it's a privilege to do what we do so well because it makes the quality of life for the residents that much better. And I'm one of them, so I just think it's an awesome opportunity, but.
I will tell you, Dylan, down at the, the latest completed roundabout here, impressive to see you, you know, doing your job around the whole time that that was under construction, but, but on the day of completion too. Just, just correlating and conversing with residents and, and just open about here, contact me, call me and everything else. And that just spoke to the way employees run around here is, is they want citizens to engage with them and, and tell them how they can help. And so you're a very professional way and it was good to see in action down there, so. Anybody else want to roast Dylan?
I just want to say thank you. When we get emails, I mean, we're, none of us are experts and so oftentimes we refer to one of you. And so thank you for being so responsive and so quick when we have residents that are asking us questions and we're able to reach out to you and you respond so quickly. We appreciate that.
First time I heard Dylan's name was from a resident who was having an issue on Eighth and Fourth, lived on the corner. And John Terrill came up to me and had nothing but good to say about Dylan and the way you treated him and you worked with him and, and got that corner to what it is today. So great job.
He was a guest on Studio Chatter?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
I'd like to know if you enjoyed Studio Chatter more than the roadshow with Chris and I?
I enjoyed it a lot more than the roadshow.
Well, congratulations, very deserving and, and way to go. Thanks for being such a great employee.
Thank you.
Are we doing a picture afterwards? When are we doing a picture, Nick?
We'll do a picture with all three of them.
Okay.
And then you can shake their hands at that time too, Mr. Muirbrook.
Like, that's a good episode.
You got it. Yeah, that is a good episode.
Not to put, put a plug in for Studio Chatter, but look at Dylan work on that roundabout. I think he's teaching everyone how to use it. You all should watch this episode.
That's pretty good.
Wow.
Don't go that way, don't go that way.
You need to play this with the audio, okay?
Pretty good. This is part of his six and eight-hour test, wasn't it, right? They match bought his cars and. Thank you, Dylan. Okay, it takes us to our next one. I think Mr. Director Scott Ailet is here to present our next employee of the third quarter. Very deserving. I'll let you say her name.
Okay, I can say it. Well, you can say it as well.
Yeah, Chrissy is a great employee.
Yeah, Chrissy's it. So Chrissy Henry is one of our senior librarians at the library. And she's coming up on twenty years of full-time service at the library. And she has been so crucial for us and for me as the director. As we moved from the old building across the street to this beautiful building here, we recognized that we couldn't just take how we operated there and throw into this building, right? We needed to grow and evolve and change a little bit to meet our increased demand and needs within this facility. And Chrissy is our senior librarian, has been my right-hand individual, helping us identify how we can be more innovative, more efficient in those processes. And then distributing and, and making those processes, putting them into place and actually moving forward. Part of that is, you know, as a supervisor, Chrissy, Chrissy originally managed a team of five clerks, most of which are part-time. And as we've grown into this building, she now has a team of over twenty individuals that report to her. And so we've had some growing pains trying to figure out how best to do that and added some additional support within her department so that she can better manage such a large team as we have to, you know, staff such a large building. But as we've moved, like I said, Chrissy has just been instrumental in identifying how do we operate in a space that is new to us, that has so much new technology and other tools that we can use on top of all of our other responsibilities of managing our digital collection, which just continues to grow every single day as individuals use living in our other digital resources and services that we provide online as well as our physical audiobooks and DVDs. So she's kind of my go-to person. When I have something that needs to get done, I go to Chrissy and say, hey, can you take this on? And it's never met with any, you know, resistance or anything like that. She's always got a very good, I can do that type attitude and takes it on without any frustration or anything like that, so. And was one that really pushed me to do the, the book chain across Maine this, this year. So she was egging me on, come on, we really got to do it. And shout out to, to Dylan to helping make that happen as well, so. Here she is, just breaking up, I guess, ice on the sidewalk, just a very.
It's the only action photo I've got. I have an ugly sweater photo I could throw up here.
We need ice broken and Chrissy will go out and do it. So anyways, she's just such a great employee, a great asset to our, our system and our library and so resourceful and just a wealth of knowledge, twenty-plus years of service, right? That our staff can rely on because of her extensive knowledge and whatnot. So I'll let Chrissy toot her own horn as well, so.
I just appreciate working here. It's been an absolute privilege all these years and I've loved every minute of it, so thank you for having me.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you, Chrissy. Very, very good. I was going to ask you if you like coming to work in your new place rather than the old place, but I bet that's a rhetorical question. You probably like a new building rather than the old building, probably, come to work a little bit, yeah. Our third one, employee of the quarter, Bronco Hunter is here to introduce the person walking with her, Emily Harriman, as an employee of the third quarter.
Award rescinded. That was my long report that I prepared for city council that I didn't have to give. I have a very.
I got you, you kept this.
Oh, I would be mad too.
Did all your coworkers keep performing?
There's more than just Emily I think that's mad at me right now, but I'm going to take it because I executed this to the T. So I'm going to own it. Whoever's mad at me, I'm just going to do a public apology and I'm going to move on.
And nobody ever surprises me, so you did really good. I figured it out during the middle of the prayer. I was like, why are they here? And then, yeah, and then I, I put it all together.
Took inspiration from heaven, so I'll take that as a victory.
Very good.
So I, I've known Emily for about fifteen years now. We were both affiliated with the Central Utah Parks Recreation Association. And so we meet together once a month and brainstorm network. And I will never forget the first time I met her. She walked up, she's like, you work for Spanish Fork City? You're so lucky. I want to work for Spanish Fork City. I can't wait till I can work for Spanish Fork City. And just went on and on and on. And then every other meeting after that, she's like, is there any openings in Spanish Fork City? And fifteen, well, I guess thirteen years later, we finally got Emily on our team and it has been awesome. She loves this community, has loved this community before she started working here, is passionate about what she does. If she's not working, you're going to see her down at the county fair volunteering. You'll see her working with the chamber, helping them with their events. She gives a ton back besides when she's clocked in and working. And I, there's not many that I know that do that like Emily does. And I, I really appreciate that about her. The other neat thing besides us valuing Emily is I was really, it was really touching to me about all the other kind things that her fellow colleagues said to her about, about this nomination and nominating her, you know, outside of our department. I want to share a few of those. Says Emily's dedicated and proactive, really proactive, maybe an overachiever. I'm really not sorry, but that was good.
It's done for next time, though, just in case.
Proactive individual who can consistently strive for, for process improvement in every event she oversees. Wings and Wheels is a recent example of that. With the same amount of manpower, she doubled, doubled attendance and still ran a high-quality event, which is very hard to do. In fact, when I think of Emily, and to give you a visual, when you see an orchestra or a symphony perform and you have the conductor and they've got all fifty to hundred members in sync doing what they need to do with their own, with their own instrument. She does that with her fellow employees, volunteers, all those that are helping her, even her subcommittees, all those that are helping her achieve an event. She's orchestrating all that from behind the scenes and oftentimes thankless, right? Because when you got a million people running around, no one knows who's really in charge, but we all know Emily's in charge and she does it well. And she's orchestrating to the T and it's always, it's always turns out high quality. And so it's my privilege to, to be here to, to recognize her, to announce her as an employee of the quarter. Congratulations, Emily.
Well, it really was a surprise. And like I said, usually nobody surprises me. And so I'm really amazed at them. I think part of it has to do with the fact that I changed offices to the basement, so I don't see anybody anymore down there. And that's why they can talk and plan it all out because I'm not around. And then the rest of the week, it feels like I'm up at Festival Lights getting everything all set up and going. And today I had a great presentation planned for you guys for Festival Lights, but it's done. So next time it's on the agenda, I am ready to go. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Yeah, but Stacy has something to say.
No, I just, I feel like I should say something because I do work closely with Emily with Fiesta Days. And I agree, your attention to details are on point. Thank you for all you do, besides Fiesta Days and Wings and Wheels. And I mean, the list is so long, but just those couple of weeks during Fiesta Days and your prep before it, it's amazing. I feel like, and I know our volunteers feel like they get a lot of accolades for being chairman or whatever. And we really know it's Emily doing all of it. So thank you, Emily, and thanks for being so patient with our public during those events. It can get tricky and heated at times and you deal with things so beautifully. So thank you.
And just adding to what Bronco said, Emily, when we were doing the sod at Electric Park, she had laid sod the day before or the day of, all day, and still showed up when the volunteers were there just to say thank you. And so I think that goes to showing what, how Emily treats the volunteers that are, that help make the programs that she's over go. But she does the same thing, so thank you, Emily.
All right, picture time.
All right, Stacy, go the other way.
This way?
One, two, three.
Hey, thank you, guys. Good job, young man.
Thank you.
Mayor, maybe while they're going back to their seats and we're settling in, just a thought of, it's pretty neat to, to listen to what was, what was said about them, neat to know what was written by their peers and that we are able to honor employees new and, and tenured. And we just have a great group of employees. This is one of the funnest things to do, I think, in a council meeting, but it's also one of the hardest to do every quarter when we receive a, a number of submissions from the employees and the great reports that we get, having to pare down what those are and, and we have a great group of employees. So this is, it's fun to be able to celebrate Chrissy and Dylan and Emily. And, but likewise, we've got a lot of great ones as well, so congratulations to the, to these three. And Chrissy and I, we, we started at just about the same time, full-time, right? I think you were a couple of months before me. And so I'm probably partial to Chrissy because we're of the same class of two thousand and four.
I'll tell you, I think it just goes as a reminder to the citizens, when we get to do these employees of the quarter, you should know there's always a, and, and don't get me wrong, Spanish Fork is, is a, is a business too. There's a lot of money that goes into a budget, a lot of money that goes out, spent on, on services to the, to the citizens. And that's, that's how a city operates. But it's not a business in the business sense of calculating employees and their ROI. That's been said before in government is, well, what's, what's, if I hire somebody and how much money are they making in the company, right? Well, in the library, how much money are you making the library? The, the purpose of the library is not to make money. The purpose of Parks and Rec is to not make money. And the engineering department, yeah, we can charge some fees for new, new developments and new things happening, but it's not enough to ever pay the whole engineering department of what they do. And so the ROI, the return on the investment is second to none in Spanish Fork because it's the quality of life. That's the return that you're getting. Of course, we run a staff that's pretty lean and pretty mean, not mean in the sense of they're mean to people. But, but, but they know their jobs. And then they step in and do everybody else's jobs when it's time to, time to do it. I mean, that's a great picture example of Chrissy knocking out ice with a hammer for people to, to, to come across the road. And so I can't say enough about the employees, echo what Seth said. The investment that, that is into them, into all of them, the return is the quality of life that we enjoy as citizens. And so pay them a fair wage, you take care of them. And, and I would not ever subscribe to local government saying, well, we'll train you up and we'll. How good would that be for the police force to train up somebody and then five years have them go somewhere else after you've paid and trained them? It's, it's just not effective and it's not effective in any department. And I'm saying enough that Seth's going to chime in.
I'm going to back off.
Oh, okay.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. It's a terrible plan. That is a terrible plan. And when you call nine-one-one, you want experienced and wonderful officers showing up. We've got some great new ones and they're backed up by some incredible veterans. When you dial nine-one-one for a medic to come, you want the quality. When your toilet is plugged and sewage is coming out of the floor drain, you want an employee that knows how to deal with the sewer system. When the power's out, you want somebody that knows what they're doing, that they know the system, right? Just on and on. You don't want, you don't want a stepping stone employer, right? We, and we are a quality, quality group of employees. We, we are blessed to have a quality group.
I think we say it a lot up here, but when you, when we talk about the quality of life that we're not only protecting, but we're growing in Spanish Fork, those people we just honored, huge, huge part of it. So thank you for sticking with this. Thank you for making a career out of, out of your job at Spanish Fork. As soon as people talk to you guys, they know it's not just a job. You guys, you guys are a lot more invested than just a place to punch in. So thank you so much. Sorry to get on my soapbox about that a little bit, but good employees. Okay, that takes us to item three on our agenda. This is public comments. This is any public comments, anybody from the public who would like to address the mayor and council? Maybe for an item that's not specifically on the agenda, but feel free to come up and address the mayor and council. We always like to hear from Taft this way.
And Lillian, Taft this way, little bit of country. As you guys know, we are gearing up towards our holiday meal events. We will be doing six hundred and fifty Thanksgiving meals out of our Spanish Fork location. We're also doing an additional two hundred and fifty meals through Camp Williams to help military families. But, and then we're doing about five hundred, that's what we're planning for our Christmas dinners. And so I actually have an invitation for elected officials. We would love to have you guys come and volunteer for our Christmas dinner event. That is going to be on December sixteenth, that is a Saturday. There's a QR code on here, so you guys can go straight to the Sign Up Genius link and get you already on there and have your spot all saved. So we would love to have at least some of you, you know, we probably won't get all of you, but, and we are inviting the surrounding cities as well to join in on the effort in handing out some Christmas dinners to families in need.
Perfect.
Thanks, Lillian.
So Salem and Payson and Springville, those guys will be here?
Whoever signs up.
We might get in, we might get in elected official fights if they show up, is that all right? Might make good, for good television if SFC ends there.
All right, well, that's all. Okay.
Thank you, Lillian, appreciate it. Anybody else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item number five. Nope, we'll go to four first. We go in order here, so we'll go to four first, we'll go to council comments. And we will go, which one do you want to start? I usually start on the end, so we'll go in the middle. We'll go to Chad first, Councilman Argyle, then go that way, how about that? Is that all right?
If it works, sure. Your call, thank you, Mayor, just a quick, well, I, I just want to echo what was said about our employees. You see them out there late at night fixing water lines, fixing power outages and, and they're usually there with a smile. They enjoy their work, they're good at it. And, and I am so grateful to live in a community where our employees enjoy their work and, and get along with the crews and other crews as they have to intermingle or intermix a little bit in order to get some of the jobs done. I'm grateful to each one of the Parks and Recs. When we talk about Wings and Wheels, I remember when there was just, I don't know, I don't know if even five hundred showed up the very first time we had that. And I think this time they said nine thousand? I think that's what they said, but then you have to add that children.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty thousand people showed up at that airport to watch. I think it was just to see Shane race that brand-new Porsche, but I'm not sure about that. But that was still pretty cool. The, the employees do such a great job in our community and they're so invested in our community. And that goes for each and every one of the departments. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna brag on our senior center a little bit. I sent some pictures over to Nick, he's gonna bring those up, but we've got the best, in my opinion, the best senior center in, in the state of Utah, and they have some amazing events that they do for our seniors. If you're a senior and you're not attending, I would invite you to go to the city's website and look at the calendar of events that the seniors plan. Some of them that they've had recently, they had their member meal a week ago or so, and they invited a, a group from Heber Valley to come and sing to them during, during their lunch. They're called the M&amp;M's. I've got some pictures, I think Nick's got pictures of the M, no, okay, this is the other one. So there were two events that took place. They had the M&amp;M's that came and sang, and then they out, here's, here's the M&amp;M's. Look at that. They, they sung just as, as good as they look, I tell ya. And then they also had recently a masquerade ball for the seniors, which was fantastic. I've gotta brag also on our youth city council that came and showed up and, and served the seniors. They took around little plates of finger foods and served all of our seniors that were there, and then they, and they danced with them and, and participated with them. Our own Pete Hampson was there recording it all. Looks like it could have been a Batman convention, but it was not, it was a masquerade, and really, really funny events that our senior center does. And so, again, I encourage you, if you're not participating, come down and participate. One reason why we are building a new senior center is because of the space that we have at the current facility. Our member meal for this month of October, when I arrived, there was not a parking stall available in the parking lot. People were parking on the street, using street parking because there were so many people that showed up. It was awesome to see that many people that are involved and, and coming, and it's great that Spanish Fork provides such a cool, cool place where the seniors can come and socialize and meet others, other seniors of their, their age range, but come down, come down and join us. All right, next thing I've got, wanted to share is, it's that time of year where in the next few weeks, we're gonna start receiving in the mail our property tax notices from the county, and it's also an election year, which means more than likely in the coming weeks, we're gonna hear a lot about property taxes. And so, I wanted to see just how Spanish Fork compares with our neighbors in the county. And so, I, I went to Utah County's website, where you can go in, you can pull the numbers and see exactly how much the property tax rate is for each city in Utah County. And so, I went and pulled those numbers for the last 21 years. I went all the way back to 2003, because from one year to the next year, things can fluctuate, right? You can see, okay, they went up really high one year, they dropped down low the next year, but if you take a 20-year average, that's where you really start to get a picture of what a community looks like. And so, Nick, if you've got that spreadsheet that you can put up, here's what it looks like, just a quick explanation of the colors that you see. You've got green, you've got red. If a cell is marked as red, it just means that the, the property tax rate went up from the prior year or stayed the same. If it's green, it means it went down. So that's the explanation there. So looking at the value that we're seeing right now, this is the 2023 tax rate. Now, again, when you get your property taxes, there are a lot of variables, and Jordan and Seth can speak better than I can to this, but what we're looking at here is just the portion that we, as a city council, have control over, which is your city tax rate. You've still got NEBO, you've got the county, you've got other entities that also apply towards that rate, but this is just the portion that we, as a city council, have control over from year to year. So if you look at the year 2023, you can see Spanish Fork comes in, out of the 23 cities in the county, we come in at 14th. So, you know, kind of towards the middle, but again, like I said, if you go year to year, it can change, it can vary. So let's look at the 20-year average. So, Nick, if you go to the far right, there's a column there that shows the average. If you can sort that from Z to A when it comes up, if it'll let you. Oh, you're in view only. See if you can get out of view only.
You have to give them, you have to share that.
I, it should be shared.
Not as view only, sorry.
Let me adjust it real quick, sorry. Anyways, without wasting the time to go into that, I'll just say that if you sort that average and look at Spanish Fork, there's only two cities that are below Spanish Fork with a 20-year average of property tax. That's Genoa and Goshen. So if you take cities of our size in comparison, Spanish Fork, there we go, did that work? There you go. Now if you scroll down, you can see where we land, and every city in the county, Spanish Fork over the past 20 years has had the third lowest city property tax rate. Why can we do that as a city? Well, it's because of what happened today. We opened the doors to Target, right? We've got a Costco, we've got, I don't know how many car washes. We, we always complain about how many car washes do we have in Spanish Fork? I don't know, but every car wash that comes to town is, and is successful, allows us as a city to keep our property tax rate at a good place. And so, I just wanted to share that. So as, as things start to come in the mail, as you start to get your own property tax rate, keep in perspective where we are as a city when it comes to, to our property taxes. I feel like, I feel like over the past 20 years, you can see, we've, we've done a very good job of, of keeping those where, where, where they are, and doing the best that we can, I feel, in doing what the mayor said of not only providing a great quality of life to our residents through our Parks and Rec Department, through our police officers, through our now full-time paramedics and fire, but also doing it in the best way possible as far as keeping dollars in, in the pockets of our residents by keeping that property tax rate low. So just wanted to share that. Seth, Jordan, was there anything that you'd like to add to that? Not to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, I don't think I have anything meaningful to add more than what you've said. The numbers do speak for themselves. As you look through, and here I go, talking. No, I don't, but let me, let me talk. As you look back through time, especially in that, that set, for example, that's columns J through N, probably most of those cities didn't raise their property tax rates. The, the property tax rate is set by the county based on revenues from last year, and so those are the years, I'm assuming if we scrolled up to the top, we'd see those, it's probably 2008, '09, '10, '11, '12.
Yeah, they are.
Nick? And so, those are the years where property values were declining, and so property rates went up as property values went down to generate the same dollar amount. That's how truth and taxation works. And so, a lot of times, our rates go up or down, and we don't have any role to play. When we hold a truth and taxation, taxation hearing, that's when we're affecting the rate to go up, right? Really important to understand, we spent a lot of time talking about this in our last truth and taxation hearing a year and a half ago, probably, yeah, a little more than a year ago, that this is the only portion of the rate that Spanish Fork has any control over, right? And, and our portion of the total property tax bill is usually around 10% of the total bill. And so, there are other parties, other players in that tax people, right? And we are at one, roughly one-tenth, maybe, maybe one, maybe 11% of it. And so, what we can control, we do a great job, I think, in, in keeping the, or the property tax rate low.
Yeah, thank you, Seth. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilman Ordor, thanks for sharing that data. Councilman Cardon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I always have the chamber go last, so today I'm gonna have them go first. So Kathleen, go ahead and come on up.
I'm glad I was ready. So, yeah, as Kevin mentioned, and you all, most of you guys were there, we were excited to have Target open. I was just answering some comments on our social media about that. So, but Spanish Fork, super excited to have that, and we're excited to find ways that we can work with them here in Spanish Fork with the chamber. We've got, instead of new networking, in the month of October, we have our Business Summit, so that's coming up next week on Thursday, the 26th. It's gonna be from 9:00 AM till 2:30 PM. We're super excited for this one. Every year, we are elevating it a little bit more. We're gonna outroll the Oaks pretty soon, as we keep, our business community keeps growing and thriving. We're bringing in Jaylen Jones from the Crucial Learnings team, one of the co-authors for Crucial Conversations, so he's coming to keynote for us. And then also, we have Brandon Fugel, who's coming in to keynote for us as well. We also have one of the owners of Sumption, Sumption Law Firm, Sumption Business Law. He's coming in to educate our businesses on business legal, making sure that, you know, especially the smaller businesses are doing things right and having all their eggs in a row, because that's been something that's been coming up, as well as some marketing training. So, we're really excited for the summit coming up. We've, we have Trick or Treat on Main, also is going to be the 28th of this month, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Businesses that are not on Main Street can participate, just have them reach out to the chamber, and we're assigning them spots that they can be, that's not in anybody's way, but they can still participate, so that we can help to grow that event. Not that it needs much help to grow, but we're gonna do everything we can to help insert businesses into the communities that are not on Main Street, so they can play. Our Scarecrow Contest is also going on, you've probably seen them up on Main Street. We'll have a voting link up on our website and on social media next week, so we're gonna have some prizes that are public vote and some prizes, prizes that are chamber votive, so that should be lots of fun, keep an eye out for that. And the Winter Lights Parade is going to be on November 25th. As soon as we get everything wrapped up in October, we'll have the links to start applications for the Winter Lights Parade. So keep, keep an eye out for all of that on our social media, SpanishForkChamber.com and on social media as well. Thanks so much for the time.
Before you walk away, Kathleen, Farmer's Market.
Yeah, that was on here, but I skipped it, thanks so much. Yep, Farmer's Market, we've got two more Saturdays, August, or October 28th is the final market. A lot of our farmers are starting to sell out, they've had really, really good years, we've had really good participation, people coming to shop the market, so they're starting to sell out of produce. So we're gonna be getting smaller and smaller, but we've got two more weeks left, October 28th is the final date of that market. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. First I wanna, or next I wanna thank Kevin for inviting me down to the senior center the last couple of times. It's been, it is neat to see how active our senior population is down at the senior center. So if you haven't been down there, like Kevin said, go down, it's, it's awesome, it's an awesome experience, and that band was as good as they looked, so it was fun. I also wanted to give a shout out to our library. They had an awesome summer reading program this year, but that hasn't stopped what the reading programs that they've done. My kids are still dragging us down here because they've got, got these dragon cards, if you haven't seen them, and it's enticing my kids to read, they're third graders. So Scott, great job, like the, your team is doing an awesome job, and the enthusiasm that they have when they come in to turn in reading time is, I don't know, it makes it, it makes it exciting as a parent, it makes it exciting as a kid, so thank you for what you do there. I wanna talk about the airport board that I get to serve on. We just recently completed the construction, or we didn't, the, the construction folks did the runway and the, the taxiway, so the airport is up and running. Beautiful pavement, lots of asphalt, lots of painting, there's a few more things that have to be done on it, but it has been checked, it's good to go, and so we will go back to full force here shortly, which is awesome. It was a, a long summer, Chris can attest to, of making sure that we had some service detoured for a little bit, especially our schools, and so they're excited to get back and going. So really, good shout, or a big shout out to Christian and his team there at the airport, making sure that that happened and that there was, and we were able to still hold wings of wheels like we talked about. Just wanted to take a quick second to, not necessarily the, the EMTs here in Spanish Fork, but the shout out to the EMTs at American Fork. On this past week, my dad had a, had an accident at home, and the EMTs were there in moments to make sure that he was there, and unfortunately, he, he did end up passing away, but I wanna thank those that have reached out this past week, and, and especially, like I said, to the American Fork Emergency Services who took care of him and IHC, really meant the world to me and my family, so thank you, and thank you to all those that have reached out this past week, and thanks for keeping my family and my mom in their prayers. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Cardon. Councilwoman Beck.
Thank you. I will add a couple things to the library. This month in October, our food for fines, and that is to go to Tabitha's Way. So any fines that you pay will be donated to Tabitha's Way. And then in your electric bill that you get each month is a calendar, and you will find a lot of things are happening at the library. The calendar is also on their website, but just to go through their list, they have 20 things on average every week happening here at the library. Some of them include a new family art class, storytime, bilingual and neurodiverse storytimes, STEAM, coding, ukulele, English, crochet. So if you are looking for a free activity or a small fee, please reach out to our library. It's, it's a great place for your teens, kids, families to come and participate. And then this week, yesterday, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, we had our weekly or monthly meeting, and they talked a lot about housing affordability and first-time home, home buyers, that cities plan for housing, but they don't build house, build houses. There are a plethora of challenges right now, as we all know, in the housing market, supply chain challenges, inflation and interest rates. And cities throughout the states are required to keep their general plan updated and plan for a future, the future of their communities, from water and traffic and the housing and moderate housing. So I, I'm grateful to be involved in that. They also said that over 60 cities throughout the state, well, from over 60 cities, they have replied that over 165,000, 1,000 housing units have been entitled but have not pulled their building permits. So, we're hoping that here over the next couple of years, before any other legislative policies are made, that we can kind of catch up to the things that's already been approved, because there's a lot going to be happening here along the Wasatch Front. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Thank you for serving on the, on the Legislative Policy Committee for the league. It's, it's an important position, and, and we're ramping up to, quickly to legislative session before we, before we know it. So thank you for representing us there. Council, or excuse me, City Manager Seth Perrin sits on the, the Board of Directors for the league. As a city manager, I asked him to take a minute, maybe highlight some of the things that Councilwoman Beck touched on there, that may be coming up down the pike, that he's up in Salt Lake, probably more than you, you wanna be right now, but get used to it.
Absolutely. Teleportation would be nice.
Yeah.
So, where'd Dylan go if he can work on that next? I appreciate it. This last couple of weeks, we spent a lot of time up there, meeting with Senate President Adams and, let's see, House Majority Leader Schultz, and, and then with the governor's staff, talking about what priorities are there, and candidly, all we're talking about is housing. We hope as a league that there will be a little bit of a break with legislation this year on housing, because we've done so much and, and had so many changes. We're hopeful that we can take a little bit of time to, to, to see how those bear out, right? As Councilwoman Beck suggested, there, in the last few years, there have been probably more than 200,000 units entitled. The number she had, which is a, a good number from the league, comes from only 65 of the 200 and some cities. So in just the 60, 60 or 65 cities, that's the number, right? So, there's been a lot of, of new lots entitled, new, new home units entitled. We're just waiting for the market to, to, to build them. And, and so, there's been some efforts to identify what are some of the barriers to getting those done, and, and there will be a lot of discussions about maybe some different invest, infrastructure banks and things that might be able to, to be used as maybe a revolving loan fund or, or different grants to put in some of the infrastructure needed to get over the hurdle of, of some of these projects. And then, yeah, it's probably, honestly, housing. Every time we talk, it's about housing. As a state, they, they estimate still a shortage of 100 to 150,000 units for today, not just talking about, you know, five years from now or 10 years from now, 100 to 150,000 units short right now. And, and there is some belief that because we're short that many units, that is adding to why homes are, are so expensive. I think there's a lot of other factors, too, but supply and demand certainly, certainly would have something to do with it, I think. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you again, yourself and Councilwoman Beck for representing us up there. You should know that that's constantly what we... You should know that that's constantly what we're talking about up there as well as the challenges of what Councilwoman Beck mentioned. We, we can permit housing, we're the land use authority in your local city, but we don't build it. And so there's a lot of units waiting to be built and permitted in Spanish Fork as well and throughout the state. So thank you for that good work. Watch for more coming up as we get closer to the session in, in January and February. And we'll keep everybody on top of it. I sent Nick just a few pictures. We've, it's already been mentioned, but before this meeting tonight, we all went to celebrate the Target ribbon cutting. Their official open date is the 22nd, which I think is next week. But today, they were kind enough to have us up there along with the Chamber. Kathleen, thanks for representing so well. They, they remarked that they were impressed. How many Chamber members are there? And, and us along with the city staff, Aaron and Ansi, the store manager and, and a director for the region. It was great to meet them, great to talk to them about their excitement about this store and what they already know about it, what they know about our area, what they know about our city, not just geographically, but what they saw as far as a line out the door already to get in. So just, just a great day, a, a long time. In the, in the planning and in the working of this stuff doesn't happen by accident either. This is a lot of good planning for years, coming down the Pike to get to where we're at. I started thinking about the aspect of this, you know, everybody likes Target usually, including, including my wife Amber. But the, the aspect of the small business that, you know, Kathleen's up here representing, talking about Main Street. And I think, well, okay, you know, this is, this is bigger business, right? This is a big publicly traded company that's come into our community. But these businesses support our small businesses. I thought about where, I mean, they support the Chamber in a lot of different ways as, as far as putting on events and, and being a member and everything. But I thought about a year ago, almost a year ago, when I was under construction for my small business on Main Street, where'd I go buy the TVs? And where'd I go buy the chairs? And where'd I go buy a couch? And it, geez, they came from, they came from big businesses that had that stuff, but they were local businesses. And so I mentioned that to, to those, Aaron and Ansi there, that not only are we excited about the retail customer, but the support of our small business community. You'll be able to find stuff in there that, that can help you, help you in your small business as well. So great day, great day for the community, great day for Target and welcome to Spanish Fork. Okay, anything else? Chad's really excited about Target, I know. I think Teresa's probably still there.
She hasn't texted me again yet.
Okay, all right. I'll bet she's there. Okay, that takes us to item number five, Spanish Fork 101. This is a pretty exciting one. This is a great story, cool story. We got a lot of them from our Parks and Rec Department, but this is a cool one too. So take it away Dale.
Thank you. Let me preface getting into the actual topic for just a second. Seth and I were talking the other day about, you know, when a call for help is issued to the citizens in Spanish Fork, they respond. And that's the Spanish Fork way, right? I mean, we, there's so many, so many examples. But that's one of the things that makes our community really special, in my opinion, is that the citizens are community minded and they're willing to get out and help each other and help the community and provide service. And we've had some of these already mentioned, you know, you got, we got so many, I could talk here for an hour, but I won't. Dave's already given me the hurry and finish off thing. But Wings and Wills was just mentioned, Fiesta Day. We, our, my department relies on thousands and thousands of volunteers, right down to volunteer coaches. And everything else that makes this, makes our department run is really, is really run by volunteers, filling sandbags, building walls. There's examples everywhere around us, painting the cemetery fence, you know, little things that make a big difference in our community and help beautify it and to help, to help keep us safe. So who can tell me when the first piece of grass was laid at the, at the sports park as a seg, as a segue into our topic today? Anybody know? When the first piece of grass was put down?
Wednesday last week.
April 8th, 2000.
This is the segue to yours Jesse.
2007. Over, under? Under?
Maybe 2000?
Well, maybe it was, maybe if you're asking the question, it was October. Are we trying to, are we trying to get close to the same day? When was it laid?
No.
Down there?
Oh, okay.
Thought that'd be pretty cool.
Just a segue. 2000 was the first year.
2000.
And do you know where that grass came from?
Another park.
Do you know who put it down?
The volunteers.
A whole bunch of volunteers. Do you know how a lot of that park was built? There's a reason Volunteer Drive is called what it is. Again, so nice segue into sod, right? I was there when the citizens came out in, in droves to help us lay the first sod at the sports park, which we started playing on later that year. So just a couple of weeks ago, as Jesse referred to, another call was made to the citizens for help. And particularly for that neighborhood up there, just east of Maple Mountain High School. But we had citizens come from all over the community and they responded again. And I've asked, Travis put together a little video for us. If you wanna just play that little 60 second clip for us, I'd appreciate it. Oh, sorry. It wasn't 60 seconds.
That guy right there was there like every day.
Thanks Travis for putting that together for us. So I've asked Adam Rogers, not Aaron Rodgers. I said that to some of my tasks, my staff this morning, and I have a few Packer fans on my staff. They went, Aaron Rodgers is coming? Well, close, right Adam?
My grandma called me Aaron.
Oh, there you go. So it is Aaron Rodgers. I've asked Aaron to come and just share his experience from a citizen's point of view. Aaron lives up in here and he was, one of the things I love about this video is all of the kids. What are they teaching the next generation of Spanish, Spanish Forkians, right? They're teaching them about the importance of service. And it was fun to see them out there just working their little hearts out and having, having a fun time. So I've asked Aaron just to come and share a few thoughts about this park and his experience as he and his family helped.
Did I call you Aaron?
Yep.
This is Adam, folks.
But his grandma called him Aaron, so.
Yeah, my name's Adam Rogers, I'm from this community and this is my daughter Nina. My wife and I are dividing and conquering tonight, so thanks for welcoming us here. But maybe it's just as well, because I guess when I think about what we've been waiting for with this park, I think a lot about people like her. I'm obviously a young father, but also professionally, I am a child development professor at BYU. So I think and talk a lot about what children need and what helps children grow and develop. And in the field generally, just briefly, we talk about risk factors and protective factors in development. And risk factors are obviously things that can bring harm to children and potentially affect their ability to develop and learn and grow the way they're supposed to. But protective factors are things that facilitate growth and learning. And a lot of what I teach in my classes is the importance of protective factors, of course, but there's two really big protective factors that I'm reminded of here. And that's, one of those is the importance of play, unstructured, free play for children. It's one of the most important ways that children learn and grow and develop. In fact, the UN has designated play universal right for children because it's so important for their growth. They're very hands-on and that's how they learn. And obviously, this has provided so much opportunity for play. And just the two weeks that we've seen this park go up, I've seen more children out and about playing than I ever have in this community. And I'm not exaggerating, it is just a buzz with children constantly. The other factor is social capital, that's the other protective factor. Or in other words, it's a fancy academic term, jargon for community and community ties. When children have no more children, but their parents know each other and there's a web of relationships, that serves a protective factor for young children because they have people in their community that can vouch for them and advocate for them. Again, just in the two weeks that we've seen this park go up, we've seen, I have personally seen children, if you wanna hold on to, hopefully this doesn't work.
Oh, yeah. It doesn't, none of them work.
Okay.
That's it all you want.
I've seen kids meet other kids that they didn't know lived in the neighborhood. It's a decent sized neighborhood, but it's not terribly large. I've seen mothers swapping phone numbers to set up play dates. My wife's made friends, my son has made friends. Oh, thank you. You want a ball?
Not from that guy.
So I've heard, I've heard phrases, I don't know if I've got this right, but I've heard things like, "A park within walking distance of every child." Did I get that right? Yeah. And I think that that's a really lofty but admirable goal that the city has. And as a father and I as a guest professional, it's one that I am really proud of and I celebrate and wanna express gratitude for the city for those types of priorities that are family facing, community centered priorities that make this a quality place to live and improve our quality of life. So we're really appreciative of Parks and Rec Department for taking so much pride in the work that they do. We're also, again, grateful to the city for its family focus and family facing priorities. So that's all that I have to say.
Adam.
Thank you for your feedback.
She'll like this.
She'll like that better than you.
That's for her, not you Adam. Thank you Adam. Adam, that was a lot better than Aaron Rodgers. I don't know what Aaron would've said here besides the Jets are just trying to stay afloat without him, but that was, that was great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate their perspective. And again, that's our, that's our goal and you guys all know that, to have a park within a 10 minute walk of every home. I've asked Bart Morale to come. I'll tell you, my hat's off to him and his crew. You know, the few days that we spent there, they were there several weeks prior to, months prior to, and pushed to get this park ready. And so I appreciate him and his staff, but wanted to give him a few minutes just to share with you a, a few of the details that are interesting to hear on what went into this park. And we'll conclude our presentation. You get the last word Bart, unless, unless we don't like it. I can't give him that.
Always makes him nervous when I have the last word. Makes Seth nervous too, you can tell.
We're both within arm's reach of our mic.
I, I, I really love building parks. It's one of the things I love about my job. In 2019, we started the design of this park. We had a neighborhood meeting, I think it was in May of 2019. And then it got set aside for a little while while we built Venture Heights. And so we were excited to get back to this park. As Dale mentioned, there was a lot of infrastructure that went ahead of the sod coming in. We ended up pulling a lot of our park maintenance employees and having them go up and do some of the construction, finish laying the sprinkler system, doing the grading. You saw some in the video, you might not recognize them, but there's some unique tools that were being used to grade the park. That's our ball field grading equipment, but does a good job on doing a finished grade of the park. And so a big shout out to the parks employees. They, they really came through, they spent a lot of time. Some of the lawns didn't get mowed in timely manner just so we could get the sod done. Dale came up with the idea, let's repurpose the sod from the sports park and put it up there. And it was a great idea, but to do it, we had a tight timeframe because we wanted to be able to water it. If you don't have water on new sod, it shrinks and then you have a lot of gaps. And so we wanted to make sure we had at least a week, week and a half of good water on it. We have a way to water, continue to water for another week or so until the weather changes for us. And so that was a big part of our push to get it done. Appreciate all the volunteers from the neighborhood that came out. There was probably 75 people the first night, Wednesday night. And we got a lot done. The next night, some were gotten for punishment, they came back and continued to help us. We really appreciated that. We had a lot of help from our employees, not just the Parks Division, but we had time slots set up. And honestly, on Thursday afternoon, the company cutting the sod and bringing it to us couldn't keep up with us laying it. We had a lot of sod on the ground on pallets when we started that shift, but we were able to catch up, which was kinda nice because we were getting tired, so it gave us a little bit of a break. But anyway, really appreciate all the people that came through and helped, all our city employees. Just kind of a way of numbers, we laid 2,000 or 230,000 square feet of sod. On the original plan, we had about an acre of sod, which would've been, well, it was 46,000 square feet of sod that we would've laid and the rest would've been hydro seed. The difference in cost was about $9,000 just to cut the sod and bring it up there versus if we were to lay what we had on the plan and hydro seed. The benefit is, is we have a park that, I told some of the residents, they'll probably be able to play turkey ball on it this Thanksgiving. So technically, we wouldn't have been outplanted. We were late enough in the year, we wouldn't have been outplanted until spring. So now we have a park that's gonna be usable in the spring. And so that was a huge advantage. I think that's pretty much all. If, just one other note, if we would've laid the whole park in sod and purchased the sod without repurposing, it would've been $85,000. So we did spend about $90,000 more to do what we did, but if we would've went the other direction, it could've been lower. So we did it for about half of what the cost would've been. With that, that's pretty much all I have to say. Do you have any questions?
I have one comment. Just shout out to the Parks Department because we had lots of volunteers, we had lots and lots of employees there for long, long hours. But one of the things, it's just three employees that, that stand out to me, and there's lots of different ones, is Carrie, Taylor and Shep. Because not only, we have lots of kids there, Dale mentioned that, lots of kids that are trying to help. And if you're trying to lay sod, you don't want your seam, you wanna make sure your seams are right, they're not all lined up. And they were taking the time to teach these kids how to lay sod, teaching them skills, getting them in that volunteer spirit. And that was, that was on Thursday night, so that's after two days, long days of laying sod, but still taking the time to really work with our volunteers. And so I think that again goes to show from the start of this meeting till now, the, the employees that we have here. So thank you, thank you to the Parks Department for, for doing that. So I just wanna give that shout out.
Thank you.
Bart, I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
Or Dale, either of you could answer it. So soccer is a growing sport in our community. Will this park be used for any rec league soccer in the future?
Dale will probably answer that question better. I'm on the other end of it.
Dale will probably answer that question better. I'm on the other end of it. I assume it will be in the future. There's a lot of people in the neighborhood there. Am I right?
Yeah, good answer.
Bart, great job. Thank you.
That's a perfect segue. I got to tell you one cute story, okay, that has to do with soccer. So we're up there laying sod Wednesday night and I'm listening to this dad talk to his son. He's a soccer player. And I don't know if you guys know it or not, but the sports park soccer fields are some of the best in the state. They talk about it openly, all of these clubs that come here. And they were talking about it. And so he was there laying sod with them and, and so I told him, I says, "Isn't this really cool? Do you like the sports park soccer fields?" "Yeah, they're the best." I says, "Isn't it neat that now you have them right here in your own front yard?" He just went, "Oh, yeah. I got all that same grass right here now." Anyway, it was cute. Yes, we will end up using this for some programming. It's a large enough open field, as you can see, that at some point we'll start having some, some programming up here as well. Thank you again for your support. These things we know don't happen without you guys supporting them, so appreciate that.
Mayor, may I add just a couple of thoughts? First of all, the innovative effort of Bart and Dale is they, they looked at, "How can we repurpose this sod?" And, and for them to find a company that could do what they did, harvesting our grass and enabling us to put this sod down really, really inexpensively, was, was great because another year before we could play on it, right, would have been, would have been nice to look at for a while, but frustrating to be so close and yet not play on it. So this, this was a great solution and very innovative to, to be able to do this without having to add a whole lot of cost. So my, my appreciation to these two and their teams for thinking outside of the, outside of the box and, and working through that. And second of all, I think we might describe this in, in some settings as the Spanish Fork Way. Inviting the residents is certainly something that we do, as Dale mentioned, the sports park. But one thing that we hear from time to time, from our employees even, is that as the city gets larger, we have more and more employees, they'll look back and say, "Oh, I remember the days when I knew everybody." And when I hired on in 2004, I heard from employees in, in that year and, and the next year, 2005, "I remember when I knew everybody." Well, just this last year, I heard an employee say, who hired on in, say, 2007 or '08, "I remember when I used to know everybody." And one of the things that we do from time to time are things like this, where we, we know that this actually shrinks the community that we live in, right? So as these neighbors came out and worked on this and they got to know each other and rubbed shoulders, the neighborhood got a little smaller. Maybe people might have left their street and, and got to know people, right? As, as Mr. Rogers was saying, people were starting to share numbers, right? The neighborhood got a little smaller. And the same thing happens at the city when we do this. And sometimes our employees are like, "Oh, well, why do I have to go to this? I'm not in, I don't work in this department." We remind them over and over again, "You work for Spanish Fork City first, then this department, then this division, then maybe the work group that you're in." And so keep your eye on that because when you go do something like this, the city shrinks. You get to know people and now you've got a friend, not in the jewelry business, but you've got a friend in the Parks Department. If you have an issue, you've got somebody in the Parks Department that you can call. Or you have a police officer friend now because you were laying sod next to whomever, right? And this is something that we try to do all the time. So when we moved the library, we had employees come and, and it was outside of their typical job. But we look at these opportunities as a way to make the city get smaller. And let people rub shoulders. I'll, I'll use the term cross-pollinate a little bit because they get to know people and, and see faces and, and interact in different ways. And so this was really a neat way to do it. And anytime we have it, we're going to do it this way. Like I said, the Spanish Fork Way. So my appreciation to everybody for their support across all the city. Excellent work.
Thanks. Yeah, and by the way, the directors responded as well. I sent out a text on Thursday night and said, "We need some help on Friday. We're not going to get this done." So they responded in the Spanish Fork Way, and so I appreciate all of that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dale. That's truly how you go backwards in the, in the home of pride progress, if you will. If somebody says, "Oh, I wish I could go back." Well, you can't go, that, these beautiful homes up there, that beautiful neighborhood, used to be farm fields and now it's not. It's beautiful homes and it's a beautiful park. But that's how you, that's how you get with each other and, and just like Seth said there. I think it's also, should be noted, where that grass came from at the sports park is being cut up because there's going to be unstructured free play, as Mr. Rogers put it, in, in a rec center pretty soon. So that's why that grass needed to come up. There will be indoor facilities for when it's tough in the winter months for kids to have unstructured free play and improve the social capital of, of their lives and, and the community. That's where that grass came from. So it's more exciting stuff to come on that very soon. But, but that's, that hits on both fronts. So thank you again. Thanks for that presentation. Thanks for everybody that volunteered and the employees. Okay, if there's nothing else on that item, it takes us to item number six, the consent items. A and B on the consent items, the minutes and an agreement for non-physician clinical professionals between Spanish Fork City, Mountain View Hospital, and Timonogus Regional Medical Services. Any questions about those two items? If there's not, I'd entertain a motion for the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items, A and B.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
The consent items are approved. Before we go to seven, our public hearing part of the, of the agenda, nobody, nobody reminded me to excuse Councilman Marshall. Councilman Marshall's not with us today. He's at another city council meeting for his, his full-time job, so. You're forgetting to remind me now, Jesse.
I, I move seats. I guess it works.
Yeah, okay, you're the one then. You should remind me. We wish Councilman Marshall well. We'll see him next council meeting with us. Item number seven, public hearing. We've got A through D tonight. The first one is an ordinance amending Title 15 regarding amateur radio. Mr. Vaughn Pikel.
Mayor and council, this proposed ordinance is, I call it a balancing act between the city's public safety and aesthetics interests in amateur radio and then the federal government has a strong interest in promoting amateur radio. And so, in, in doing so, I want to just read to you a section from the federal rule, the federal rules on this amateur radio. And it gives you an indication of how important it is to the federal government. Says, "Local regulations, which involve placement, screening, or height of antennas based on health, safety, or aesthetic considerations, must be crafted to accommodate reasonably amateur communications and to represent the minimum practicable regulation to accomplish the local authority's legitimate purpose." So that kind of sets the stage about where we can regulate and, and to, and to accommodate the amateur radio enthusiasts. There is a safety concern that we have noticed here in Spanish Fork. I think Nick has a photograph that you can show us. On July 3rd of this year, there was a severe windstorm. You might remember it was the holiday weekend and trees were uprooted in the, in the golf course and all around town. I looked at news reports from that day and the speeds were, wind speeds were 79 or 80 miles per hour. And an existing tower collapsed and crashed into the public street. Fortunately, no pedestrians or cars were, were damaged or hurt at that moment. But there is a significant safety concern to make sure that these structures are constructed in accordance with applicable standards. There's also an aesthetic concern that antennas should fit into their neighborhoods, be located more towards the interior of the lot as far from their neighbors as possible, and screened if possible. So, that's a little bit of the why we have a proposed ordinance for you tonight. Now I'd like to go over just a few of the features of the ordinance. First thing, in a, in a comment, in furthering the federal government interest is making these antennas and towers a permitted use in all zones. But there are some reasonable regulations that apply to them. The maximum height of 45 feet, setback limitations that they should be at least 20 feet from neighboring property lines and 30 feet from the public right-of-way. No encroachment on property of another, including no extension into the right-of-way. That was part of the problem with this one, is that it was extending into the right-of-way when the antenna was, was extended for receiving and transmitting signals. Also, there's provision about keeping clearance, required clearances from electric power lines. A building permit is required if it's greater than 12 feet in height and that it meets the specifications and certification that it can withstand an 80 mile per hour, 80 mile per hour wind load, like, like in this situation. No more than one antenna or support structure per lot or parcel. And, and that materials need to be non-reflective and inconspicuous installation as well. Also, if it is equipped with this feature, that the antenna portion be lowered or retracted or nested when the antenna is not in use. Now, in, in also furthering the, the government purpose, we, I want to, there's a provision in there to provide for reasonable accommodations from the restrictions that we have like setback or height. There's a conditional use permit process where they can evaluate whether additional height would be necessary or a lesser setback would be necessary. And there's criteria in there for evaluating whether they, they would qualify for that. Consideration for things like the safety, life, and property views or aesthetics. They specifically mentioned the Wasatch Mountains, Utah Lake, and at the planning commission's recommendation, the Spanish Fork River Bottoms added as an aesthetic resource we want to, want to protect. Also, the overall aesthetic quality of the neighborhood, property values, but not testimony that's speculative of property values, but maybe supported through a competitive market analysis or an appraisal that would show that there could be a negative impact to property values. And then consider the operator's need for additional height or less setback based on the type of antenna they have and what type of communications they like to undertake. There's ways to mitigate some of the negative consequences, like your greater setback. If you can provide more than what's required in the ordinance, maybe you can get additional height. If you can plant foliage to screen the antenna or the support structure, at least, that would maybe justify additional height. Whether it is a retractable structure, not all of them are, but if it is, then it becomes less intrusive when it's not in use. Or if it's placed adjacent to land that's not likely to be developed, some public lands or something like that, then maybe it, it was less of a concern. And then finally, there is a provision about abandonment. If it's, if it's been abandoned for two years, then the authorization to have the antenna would, would lapse. Those are the general provisions of the ordinance. We tried our best to, again, walk the tight rope of encouraging them, but also putting some reasonable limitations that are related to health and aesthetics in the neighborhood. Or I should, I should say, health and safety. Any questions about that draft?
Yeah, so just a question. So we're D, 30 feet from a public right-of-way. Most right-of-ways nowadays are 15 feet from the side, behind the sidewalk into the property. The other, your, your first sentence on the other says streets. I guess you need to clarify because if you're 15 feet into the property and then you want 30 feet from the property, means that got to be 50 feet.
The antenna is that the, the right-of-way line is where the public domain begins, whether that's the sidewalk or the park strip. Usually it's the back of the sidewalk. There's the, the public right-of-way. There could be other areas that are landscape buffers between the sidewalk and the property.
I wonder if you're thinking utility easement.
Yeah, I probably am. But that's also public right-of-way, no?
You're talking sidewalks.
Just, yeah, just easement versus right-of-way.
The utility easement is still a property that's owned by the homeowner. That's available for them to use for setback.
Vaughn, are the setbacks based on the support structure or the antenna itself?
It's kind of a, a middle ground. It's not particularly tied to any support structure or height. I mean, we thought about and considered, maybe we need a setback that's one times the height or one and a half times the height. I think that is a little strict. Looking at other cases that the federal rules cited, they kind of go with, these are more typical setbacks, like 20 and 30 feet are, are normal. Especially if you have a, a building permit issue that's on an engineered design, it should be able to withstand the, the wind speeds and the loads presented by them. You don't need to have such a great setback. So it, it's kind of a more permissive setback, definitely.
Does this apply to cell towers as well, or are we just looking at amateur radio?
This is just for amateur radio towers.
Amateur radio towers, yeah.
My question kind of went with what Kevin's is, is, does this go on the building inspectors, like in Dave's department, to check and to verify that it meets that wind restriction? Or, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Vaughn before we open up for public hearing? Thank you, Vaughn. I'd entertain a motion to go to a public hearing for item A.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden. All in favor to go in public hearing, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we're in public hearing for item A. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the ordinance amending Title 15 regarding amateur radio? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Any other questions for staff?
I've got one more. Vaughn, are there any grandfathering circumstances with this? Any towers currently existing that?
If there are existing towers that have been permitted by the city, then I think they would be grandfathered.
Are we aware of any?
Yeah.
There are some?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just say, as I watched the, the discussion between this item and the planning commission, I appreciate the, the work of the planning commission, appreciate the explanations, the questions back and forth. I think, I think it is important, the aesthetic part of it, the, the value part of it. Vaughn, I think you touched on this in the planning commission, but some of the times we get that just as an arbitrary word that, "Hey, if this happens next to my property, it's going to devalue my property." Well, we're not the appraisal professionals, but you know, this is something that's out of the norm of kind of a house, a dwelling being built next. And so if somebody has consideration that way, we'd rely on a professional to tell us why that's the case, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't know how many times I've been to a public hearing, just like you all, where people complain about their property values being damaged. It's just their thoughts, their speculation. I think it needed to be something more concrete than that.
But if someone has come here with some substantiated, you know, independent, what, professional view of that, would we could take that into consideration?
I think you could take that under consideration, absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion for item A.
I move to approve the ordinance amending Title 15 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code regarding amateur radio antennas based upon the findings recited in the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. A roll-call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Takes us to item B, ordinance amending Title 15 regarding fencing requirements and master plan developments. Mr. David Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. No master plan developments, just fencing. Kind of scaled this back a little bit, so. By way of what's proposed, I'll give you a little bit of background. Happy to go into as much or as little detail as you want me on that. We received direction from the city council several months ago to look into a particular situation, how potentially to change Title 15 to, to accommodate it and to make it legal. And to be honest, initially, neither myself or others in our office had any idea about how to do that. In short, it requires that the code be amended as is proposed tonight to allow for solid six-foot-tall fences between a home and a street, in the front yard, which, that I'm aware of, Spanish Fork has not allowed in the past as long as we've had restrictions on fencing and zoning requirements and that sort of a thing. I've lived in communities where that is allowed and it's not something that I would recommend happen in Spanish Fork. And we were really stuck. Didn't know how to move this forward, certainly wanted to act with the direction that we'd been given. And basically, we... And basically, we reached out for help and had a couple of different conversations in Development Review Committee meetings about what potentially to do. And in short, as we looked at the particular properties that had been the subject properties, I would say here, we recognized that, given their configuration, which is really, really unique, there probably is a circumstance where allowing for a six-foot-tall solid fence in what we typically would call the front yard setback makes some sense. But certainly think those circumstances are very limited. And we were able to build upon some other language that we had in the code, still have, relative to what's defined as an irregularly shaped lot. In fact, one of the properties that brought this to our attention, it's a triangularly shaped lot. There are three lot lines. It is irregular. And I certainly can see how, for a property in that situation, to be able to make use of some yard space the way that they might want to. A change to our ordinance, in my opinion, was warranted. So with the help of some other folks on the Development Review Committee, we were able to put together what's before you tonight. Wasn't sure that we'd be able to do this and to bring a recommendation to you from the DRC and Planning Commission both for approval. That's where we're at. And beyond that, and I mean this genuinely, I, I really think this makes sense. This does not make it so that in your typical subdivision, somebody's going to be allowed to go and put up a fence of that kind of height, you know, particularly solid. Actually, it's irrelevant whether it's solid or not, but a six-foot-tall fence in a front yard, only under certain circumstances that are detailed out in the language that we have in the code, I should say, the, the proposal here, which, again, I think is appropriate. And this comes to you with recommendations from staff and the Planning Commission for approval.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this before going to the public?
I do. I talked to the resident that initially brought this to my attention, and Mayor and I went and met with him in April, I believe. And I had sent this to him last night to just look over. His question was, why have A and B? Why not just put A and B together so it's a regular lot and an irregular lot, rather than having two different ordinances to look at? I know you have to have two hundred feet in the front yard, correct, to even have this, the fence allowance? So why not just keep it, the two hundred feet at fifteen thousand square feet, so these people on the irregular-shaped lots aren't coming to you and you having to make a, a decision arbitrarily to just decide, yeah, I'll let you have it or not? Why not just put it together? So I told him I would ask about that, or if you can explain if that would make sense.
Yeah, you have a couple of different questions, I kind of feel like, there. First of all, I really don't feel that, as proposed, there is anything that's arbitrary. Irregular-shaped lots are clearly defined, fifteen thousand square feet, easy to measure. And I think this really is a matter, if somebody qualifies, then they have the opportunity to apply for a fence permit, and that would be granted if they comply with this. So I don't think that either with the circumstance that is spelled out, we don't have it up there, but just before the B that's referenced there in the code, or with what is referenced with what's proposed there, that's what we're seeing there with B, that there is anything really subjective to how the standards would be applied. We don't necessarily want to create an opportunity that's any larger than what's needed to deal with the situation at hand. And in this particular case, a fence has already been installed right up to a sidewalk. And that's really what we're trying to limit to certain situations. This may be interesting, but A did not exist in the code either, just a few years ago. But there was a fairly unique situation there where somebody wanted to install a taller fence where it wasn't allowed. And part of the, the process that we went through to, to arrive to what seemed to be sensible at that point in time involved, making sure that we didn't have a six-foot-tall fence right at the sidewalk. So as you can see with A there, under that circumstance, where it's not an irregularly-shaped lot, there's still to be ten feet of landscape area between the sidewalk and the fence, which I think is a good idea for a number of reasons. That was, that, that's not an option with the circumstance we're trying to address here without having a particular property or relocate their fence. So that's one distinction between the two situations that we're trying to address there that, that I think makes this necessary, having those two different parts.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Stacy's? How much longer, so you have to apply for a permit regardless if you're going to, doesn't matter what type of fence you're going to do, you need to apply for a permit. How much longer is it going to take me if I have an irregular lot to get that approval?
Potentially no more time. If the person in our building inspection office that's reviewing the permit has a question and they need to track perhaps Brandon Snyder in our office down or me to, to discuss it, might take five minutes, might take a day, you know, depending on, you know, when we cross paths, but no significant increase in time. I think typically we're no more than a few days. Often, I would hope that typically we're less than that to issue fence permits, which, a bit of a plug there, we don't charge anything for fence permits. We don't want to be in situations like we're in now, where somebody has invested significantly to construct a fence, where, at least according to our current regulations, it shouldn't be. So we're, we're simply trying to get out ahead of the game and say, hey, come in, talk to us about what you want to build, where you want to build it, and make sure everything's good before you spend that kind of money or go to that kind of effort.
Okay, I have one more question. Why the difference in A, it's twenty thousand square feet, and B, fifteen thousand? Why are they both not twenty or both fifteen?
The first situation that we looked at, they had more than twenty thousand square feet, and this situation, they have more than fifteen. So literally, it's a matter of just trying to deal with the matter at hand.
Okay, so people coming in the future, what if they come in and they're sixteen? We're just going to have to say no?
Or it ends up being a part of a discussion and...
Okay.
It's hard to predict what the magic number is.
I agree.
I don't, I will say that I, this issue came up for the first time in...
Ever?
...the years that I've spent here.
Yeah.
For this past year, I don't think it's going to be a very regular thing.
I agree.
I think A has maybe been used one more time, so maybe twice...
Oh, okay.
...in the last five years, but maybe not, maybe it's just that one time, so...
And that one time was absolutely beneficial. If you know which property Dave's referring to, it looks beautiful.
Yeah.
To be able to make that work, you know, to the benefit of the property owner plus the city, they did a great job of, of making sure that the fence is landscaped and looks great. I assume it'll be a similar situation here, that, like you say, I doubt this will come up very often. It sounds to me like there's a circumstance that's come up within the city that they reached out and were trying to make it work for the property owner.
And I really appreciate you guys taking the time to take care of this.
Happy to, certainly. Glad we're here, you know, regardless of what you do, I think we've come up with an option at least.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, David. I'd entertain a motion to go to a public hearing, see if anybody wants to, from the public wants to speak to it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item B of public hearing, the fence, fencing requirements. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any further questions, concerns with Dave or staff on this?
I'm good to go forward with what you've presented, because it, it is going to happen so far and few and in between, and I, I'm not worried about the implications that they might come back and have you have to look at it. That sounds like it's rarely going to happen. So thanks again. So I'll go ahead and move to approve the ordinance changes to the fencing requirements contained in Title fifteen of the municipal code.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Cardon. A roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Item B is approved, takes us to item C, ordinance, ordinance amending the official zoning map for the lots subdivision, LOTZ.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is down on eight thousand south, not too far from the Revere Medical Center that's in Salem, on the other side of the, the city boundary. Subject property here, it's not real large, six acres. It's in an area that's general planned for estate density lots. There was a zone change approved with a preliminary plat that was also approved for the property that's just next door to the subject property to the east there. See that right there? And a preliminary plat that was conditionally approved by the Planning Commission for the subject property here, does connect to the layout and design for the development that has been approved next door. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the zone change be approved, as I mentioned a minute ago. The Planning Commission even has approved a preliminary plat, which is subject to the City Council approving a zone change for the property. In this particular case, we're not talking about a master plan development, we're just talking about a standard subdivision that meets all of our traditional zoning requirements for the R one fifteen zone. And as such, it's the Planning Commission, that is the land use authority, that approves that and not the City Council, so that's why it has gone through our process the way that it has. Here's an image, in fact, of what has been, assuming, conditionally approved by the Planning Commission. One thing that I mentioned during the Planning Commission meeting is that I appreciate now that we've seen a couple of different subdivisions proposed for this particular area at the density that we're talking about, which frankly, I think is a little bit unique. Oftentimes, along a corridor like this one, you'd see in different communities, higher density, that is not universally true. You also see low density along corridors like this. In May of two thousand and eighteen, in fact, a proposal was made to amend the general plan to allow for higher density along this corridor with this particular property even being included in what was discussed. At that point in time, was a relatively nominal increase in density that was proposed. But at that point in time, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission felt like additional density wasn't warranted for properties through this corridor. So with recommendations for denial by both the DRC and the Planning Commission, that I'm aware of, that proposal never even made its way to the City Council. So in light of that, and other less formal conversations that we've had about doing, for example, townhomes on property that's just a little bit further to the east of this, and that sort of a thing, with the Planning Commission being fairly resolute on the idea that this is an area that is appropriate for the kind of density that we're talking about. Again, relatively easy for staff to support a zone change that's consistent with the general plan, and that I'm aware of, the applicant has addressed the concerns that staff has raised relative to infrastructure and that sort of a thing. So again, the proposed zone change comes with recommendations for approval from both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave before a public hearing on this? Item?
Yep. Got one for you, Dave. The conditions, well, first of all, we're, we are only approving the zone change tonight, right? That's, that's all that's before us?
That's correct, yes.
So as far as any plat or anything, is this a standard subdivision, which means it won't come back before us?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the only thing that needs to be approved by the council, is the actual zone change?
Yes.
One other question for now, related to conditions, condition two. We don't always see this one when things come up before us, and that's, the applicant address any red lines? Do you, are you aware of any red lines that the applicant will need to address? Explain to me possible or potential red lines that, that they have to address?
I, I can throw out some things that are fairly common. I'm not sure if they apply here, but I'd be happy to look up the record that we have and see if there's anything abnormal that maybe jumps out. There wasn't anything unique discussed in the Development Review Committee meeting about the property or unique needs in terms of things that still hadn't been addressed, things that would be red lines or instructions to correct certain things on plans. Sometimes it's as simple as, you know, add a fire hydrant at a certain location, or move a streetlight, or those types of things, which, at the preliminary plat level, we don't get into a lot of detail on, but certainly a little bit. I will admit that this circumstance that I'm in right now, where we're dealing with a standard subdivision that has a zone change associated with it, is unique for us. Typically, it's not a standard subdivision, it's a master plan development, and we're presenting both the preliminary plat and the zone change together. In that case, I think condition number two is appropriate. Frankly, I think that with a legislative act like the zone change, we probably should have left that out of our recommendation. That's maybe a learning moment for me, given where we are, but I'd be happy to look and see if there's anything, you know, maybe that...
That applies?
...unique that jumps out.
Then one other question before we go into public hearing, and Nick, maybe you can help me with this, if you could bring up the city's map, the GIS mapping tool. Chris, if you want to help answer the question I'll have on this one. Then under layers that you just closed, if you could click on the master plans, and within master plans, the stormwater master plan, please, thank you. Then if you could just zoom out, get a full view of the city. Okay, and then zoom in to the property that we're referring to. You can see a couple of bright orange spots on there. Down in the bottom left, Nick, is the property that we're, we are looking at tonight. You can see it, yep, a little more. Then if you zoom again and then click on that bright orange parcel, it's listed as the storm master plan sub-basin. And maybe, Chris, if you can help explain why that portion's bright orange as compared to the rest of the map or the rest of that area?
So the stormwater in this area needs to go across the road there to the south into the, the Beer Creek Drainage. And there are pipes that allow it to go across that are restrictive. And so when there's a big storm, we have really tight clays in this area, so the water doesn't really seep into the ground very well. And so it kind of backs up into certain areas, and then it goes through at a certain rate that can be handled by the area to the south. And so what we've planned for is that as development occurs, detention basins have to be installed with the developments to, to kind of accommodate that water as it kind of then slowly goes across into the Beer Creek Drainage Basin. So that indicates where we anticipate at least one of those basins to be at a crossing down to the, the drainage.
Then if they're applying for a standard subdivision, do they have to include in that final plan or plot plan retention basins to meet what we've got in the master plan?
Yeah, so we, we, we make sure that, that their development will have detentions of some sort, so that the release rates of the water will not back up into a yard or a house or, or other people's property, so...
So it's not like you can take this orange piece and move it west or move it east, because you're telling me there's already pipes under the ground?
No, you absolutely can. That's just, this is a master plan, this is from fifteen thousand feet, just saying somewhere in this area. So it, it, it comes down to more detailed survey engineering when, when you actually design it, but, but we require all final, final plats to, to have a good design that will work, so...
So if this property were the first... So if this property were the first to develop in the area, there's no concern that if they fill that area in to be able to get construction up, to be able to build, that that would be a deterrent?
There's lots of options, yeah. So everyone will have to provide their own solutions for, for the, how, how the storm water will be detained and then released.
But one thing the, the city requires is that as a development is improved, that they're, they're responsible for the water on their own land. They're, it's not allowed for them. Basically, if their development causes runoff onto somebody else's property, they're responsible for that, right?
Right. The exception might be if, if it runs off into a borrow area of a road, which is what we, we call a natural drainage, or, or any other natural drainage. And if that natural drainage goes across private property, then, then that's allowed by, by state law.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Anyone else?
Dave, will you remind our viewers, estate density? What is that?
That is no more than basically two homes per acre. And this particular zoning district that we're talking about has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, which by the time you design for roads and things like that, essentially leaves you space for two homes per acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave?
All right, no.
Okay. Thank you, David. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item C.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item C. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item?
My name's Jackie Larson. Nick, would you mind helping pull up the map of the subdivision of water rights? And then when you get there, I'll have you pull up the layer for streams and rivers. So this wasn't actually accurately presented during Planning Commission. They talks about water, the property owner, had said that it was actually from irrigation, and it's not. And that goes through a different drain. Okay, on your layers on the, right behind the clock, click on Show More Layers, and then do your ABCs down to the S for Streams and Rivers. Yes, and okay. And then zoom on in. So this is actually a surface tributary system to Beer Creek. It's not storm water, it seeps out of the side. It went into a pond that another developer actually filled it in, but this water comes out of the side, it comes down into this culvert, continues down to Beer Creek. So with that, there's like historical uses that both my family and the other surrounding families have to this water. And I'm afraid of what happens if they back that up, what's going to do that, or to us? But keep going, it's true, just go on some more to like right where we're at. Keep going, keep going. A little bit more, go down a little bit, a little bit more. So that blue line, this quicker line, right above Highway 164, that shows that it's actually a stream coming from that pond further up north, and that's about generally the direction that meanders down through the property before it goes under Highway 64, or 164. So I feel like without recognizing like the physical and environmental constraints and the limitations, how can you accurately determine what the available acreage is, and the density, and like any setback requirements without pulling those into consideration, knowing where you actually can and can't build, and what's actually stream bed, and what permits you actually have to have before you can say that, yes, you can go pass on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Anyone else from the public? Sorry, I neglected if you're the, yeah, the applicant?
Yeah.
I should have, yeah, sorry, property owner, I should have asked you to come up if you wanted to speak before public hearing, but you're here now.
Yep.
So thank you. Tell, tell the public who you are, sorry.
TJ Lots, owner of the property. So yeah, we're proposing a change from our rural residential, which allows one, one residence on the property to subdividing it. Yeah, there's definitely some challenges with the property being low, with civil engineering and the geotech engineering they're working on. You know, obviously, how much fill we have to bring in, what we do with the storm water, the drainage, the release rate of, of storm water, which is going to be on the property, handled by the property, and then there is surface drainage around it that, that we have to take care of. So all of that, I think, is being thought through, and, and we're designing the, either retention or detention, I'm not sure what they call it, but, yeah, so all of that is being thought through with the civil engineering and through the, through the design process. But yeah, it's, it's challenging, but I think there's lots of houses that go on, on clay and challenging, challenging soils. So are there any questions for me? I'll try to answer it, I'm not a civil engineer, but I've kind of been involved with the, the preliminary plot plan so far, and I think they're just standard, you know, fire truck turnarounds and UDOT easements that we're going to have to go through, and, and that type of stuff will come up on the red lines, but I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary.
That was my one question that came up from Planning Commission, was have you guys engaged with UDOT on that access?
Yeah, so we're going to have to file a permit because it is a UDOT street. I don't, we haven't gotten approval yet. I think, I think we're going to try to do that with the final plat approval process, but we are going to have to get the, the UDOT to add that turn lane and widen the road there. I don't know exactly what, but, but it'll be a process still. I think we understand it's not going to happen tomorrow, it's going to take a little bit of time, so.
TJ, what is your timeline? When are you hoping, or when would you hope to start construction on any homes on your property?
I would hope maybe next spring, summer time, depending on how the approvals go, so I think that's what I would hope for.
Any other questions for the property owner applicant?
So when you say you're working with engineers, are those Spanish Fork City engineers, or there's a-
No, our civil engineer, LEI, but they're, they're working with the city to get everything approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lots.
Okay.
Appreciate it. We might call you up if you have, if we have any more questions for you. Thank you. Anybody else from the public here to speak about this item? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilman, or, or they're seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Good discussion back up here. Question a little bit, maybe, Chris, this is in, in your department, about flows and where river water can go, water can go. Obviously, that's some geotech stuff that's got to be done on developments, and I, I think this one has to have it done.
So, so, yeah, there, there's geotech reports being done on it, and, and that's been taken care of with Mrs. Larson's question. She makes a good point that you want to not restrict the tributaries to Beer Creek, and, and, and that's something that we, we take seriously. What we're concerned about is just the pipe across the road is, is small, and so if you get a big storm event, it can back up. The water, it still gets into the tributary for Beer Creek, but we just have to accommodate that backup, so it's not our intent to restrict any of the water going to Beer Creek, so.
So what are steps that you take, I guess, Chris, to make sure with development, that when there is this big storm, obviously retention, retention basins, right?
Yeah, so a detention basin is just supposed to slow the water down enough so that it doesn't overwhelm drainages downstream. And so our, our law is that a detention basin has to completely drain out within 48 hours, so the water all makes it down into the, the drainage system, just not in a manner that will flood people or properties downstream, so.
So that would all happen during the final plot approval?
Yeah, that's, that's when, that's when you get to that level of engineering. At the preliminary plat stage, typically, they don't drill down and spend that much money on, that level of money on engineering, just in case, you know, big changes occur at the preliminary level. So her question, her question is about wetlands and delineations. So what, what happens is, is the property that's responsible is accountable for wetlands type issues. The city doesn't enforce that, that's enforced by the Army Corps of Engineers. So that's between them, their wetlands consultant and, and the permitting party, the Army Corps of Engineers.
That's a report we would get if they had to get the report.
Yeah, a lot of times, they'll show it on the plans and, and why they're designing around that, but we, we don't regulate that.
Thank you.
So, Chris, you feel comfortable for us moving forward with the information we have at this time?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have no concerns about this development. It seems like a great development.
So Mayor, I think it's important to keep in mind, this is a zone change request, not the final plat. How, how this will be designed, as Chris said, there is significant work that has to happen. I, I hope Mr. Lots is able to, to start construction on the timetable the outline, but, but with some of the work he has to do, it might be longer than that. You have a property that I think is just to the east of this, I think it's even shown on, with some of the dotted lines, that it was, it was zone changed a couple of years ago, and, and they haven't moved forward for whatever their reasons are. So we have laws in place that regulate what subdivisions must do and how they must act. I think the question before us tonight is, do we want to allow them to potentially build, you know, according to the densities and what's allowed in the zone of R-115? How water will flow, that hasn't been designed yet. Those concerns are, are, are real and must be dealt with. But how, how water will flow, where it will flow exactly, how ditches will be aligned and how they will be piped and whatnot, that hasn't been designed yet. They'll have to work with, any development has to work with irrigation companies in the area, and, and the storm water will flow again according to our laws. And so I don't have any concerns either with, with the, the proposed zone change happening. I have a lot of concerns with the building today, right, because they haven't done the work that they're supposed to do, and, and if I was them, I wouldn't do the work that I'm supposed to do until I have a feeling of whether or not I can do it, right? That's, that's kind of a step-by-step process, so. The question that we have before us tonight really is whether or not it fits with your purview of where things would like to go, the timing, when you'd like things to happen, et cetera. Does it fit with the general plan? And then the laws that you have in place will govern how do utilities function for this particular subdivision. Chris, did I overstate anything there, or simplify our bond as well?
So after tonight, we, we approve or don't approve the zone change, and then moving forward, it just falls under the laws that are already in place, and the property owner at that point continues working with engineers, with Army Corps if necessary.
Sure.
Make sure that all of those laws are followed to a T, and that everything according, you know, groundwater, drainage, all of that gets taken care of.
Yeah.
I think it was a decent discussion by the Planning Commission that I saw, too, and this is going to be part of the permitting process with UDOT, I'm sure, but your road widening there, I mean, that's a pretty major artery into our city, so a lot of traffic, not going slow in front of what would be your access point, but I guess that's where those engineers would discuss with you how much space you need to decelerate and, and accelerate coming in and out of that neighborhood, right? Do we have any concerns about how many accesses they get onto this road? I guess that's more of a UDOT concern than, than our concern?
Yeah, we, we actually have a, a plan in place for accesses, and it's my understanding that this meets that plan.
This lines up with that.
At the same time, I think we have somewhat of a requirement to enable access.
Right.
Right, and if they were, if this was, yeah, if this guy was going to build based on the RR zone that's there, I think UDOT would have to give him access from the road, and, and so we, we do have the standards, again, back to those, the laws that we have. We have the standards that dictate spacing, but UDOT's going to have to enable for some access on and off of that road. It might be that in a coming day, you know, whenever that is, this is a right-in, right-out only, based on whatever happens on this road, but they would have to have some ability to get in and out of their property.
But where, whatever west street that is labeled right now lines up with what, what we can see, as far as we can see, as plans of hitting that road and going to other places?
Yeah, and in many ways, this will dictate where other roads go.
That's true.
Right, because this is the way for the guy behind him to get out, and for the person, the property to the east to get in and out, right? This is something very critical for what we do with our subdivisions, where we enable for the next person to be able to develop, and thereby limit some of the access points onto these major roads. So yeah, that's, that's natural and normal as well.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
I, I just have one question, and it's probably Chris answered it. These homes that are above subdivision that's up above this on Mill Road, used to always feed, used to feed into Salem City, has that all been corrected into, I know we have a pump station right down the road from this?
Yeah, they, they are all feeding into Spanish Fork City sewer lines now with that LUT station that was constructed, and, and these would as well.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Good question. Okay, any other questions about this item C?
Not a question, but I think that it's important to, you know, kind of come full circle, that this is a, we're just approving the zone change, not necessarily the plot that's there, right? The preliminary plat, that was the, the Planning Commission, because I think that it does change a little bit what we're, we're doing tonight, so it's important to full circle that.
But, but the doubt, it'll have to still be brought up, not, not in front of this body, but in front of, you know, multiple bodies of the city, to make sure it's, it lines up correctly.
For sure.
Yeah. Good point. Okay, if there's no more questions for this item, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance amending the official zoning map for the LUT subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Do you want me to list them?
Terrace.
Findings that proposed conforms to the city's general plan designation, conditions that the applicant meets the city zoning requirements and construction standards, that the applicant addresses any red line.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
You skipped number three, should we make sure that's on it, that the land be set aside for future rail expansion?
That's the next item.
Number three, that's for the next item.
My C and D got mixed up, too. I had to double-click.
Okay.
I don't know what's going on tonight, but there's bugs in there.
I got it. I'm back on the right one. Sorry to interrupt them, Chad.
Would you like to second without the third item?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Item C is approved, takes us to item D of the public hearing agenda, ordinance amending the official zone map for the Orchard subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Similar in some ways to what you just discussed, certainly unique for us to have two standard subdivisions proposed to be developed in the R-115 zone. This one, like the, the previous one that you just looked at, comes to you with recommendations from both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission for approval. The Planning Commission has approved a preliminary plat subject to the zone change being approved, and the conditions that we have listed in the staff report. The subject property in this case is on the other side of the city, however, from where we were just looking, very near the Spanish Fork Mapleton boundary, right here to the north of Quiet Valley, which is just to the south. Actually, there's a development between Quiet Valley and the subject property here. This, as with the property we're just looking at, is in an area that is- is in an area that is designated as state density residential on the city's general plan. Therefore, a proposal to change the zoning Darwin 15 is consistent with that. Makes the land use side of the view pretty easy for us. And in fact, I guess maybe to be succinct and really get to the only issue that we've discussed much, it is the need to set aside an appropriate amount of room along the rail corridor that is on the eastern boundary of the subject property right there for the prospect of rail consolidation and there being an additional rail line in that area. We've done that with Quiet Valley, the project to the north of Quiet Valley, the project north of Quiet Valley, and the projects that are just east of Maple Mountain High School. Engineering department is looking at exactly how much additional space they need. I don't know if it's 30 feet or 60 feet, but to provide some perspective here, I believe this lot line right here, 162 feet, might be 172 feet. It's, these are really deep lots. So the idea that they could dedicate, you know, dozens of feet of additional space along that corridor for rail expansion and still have very buildable, in fact, I would say very nice lots here. I think that's very real. I don't think, if that line has shown here, the eastern boundary of the property does need to move to the west with space being set aside for rail expansion. That, I don't see how that could be a problem. And that was not something that caused a lot of concern for the Development Review Committee. Does that make sense, by the way, what I'm talking about there? Kind of a work in progress there, certainly something that would be addressed on the final plat application.
Who's bringing donuts? Are you bringing donuts? Nope. Okay. Proceed.
And really, I'm not aware of other issues that require attention as this goes from final plat approval, or sorry, from preliminary plat approval with a zone change tonight to final plat and development.
Does that road, I'm assuming it does line up with the development to the south?
Exactly, yeah. So which, incidentally, not to speak for the applicant's designer, but it creates a challenge as we also want to make sure that a stub road to the property to the north leaves an appropriate amount of space for somebody to develop some home sites between that road and the railroad tracks on that property. It, yeah, this is kind of a unique design with the cul-de-sac right there adjacent to an intersection like that. But I understand why the applicants have designed it that way. And it is at least in part because they need to tie in right there.
And the power lines are across the street at this point, right?
Yes.
At the property?
The big ones are.
Yeah, the big ones.
Relatively close to the park, the Insta Park that just got done.
It's a little ways away.
Ride your scooter there?
If you could.
Oh, that's a long scooter ride today.
Right now, until we get out there.
We're hoping that there's another park.
Pretty close.
I don't know. I can't remember exactly, but it's at least across the street. And it might be a little bit south from here, but we hope to have a park in this area.
Any questions for Dave before public hearing on this one? Thank you, Dave. I'd entertain a motion, go to public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item D. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? And I apologize, I've done it again. I'm terrible at this. It's like my first time doing this. Sorry, the applicant, if you're here, you're more than welcome to come up and speak and have us ask you any questions.
Yeah, my name's Bart Bogus. I've met with neighbors to the north and to the south. So, yeah, we're appreciative to the city and the staff. And it's going to be a good development, so.
Some apple tree, what are those, apple trees?
Yeah, they're old apple trees and then the elk got them this year and did a lot of damage, so.
Oh, okay, all right. I'd say the elk probably didn't help. They were beautiful to watch all winter, but.
Yeah.
Came to.
There was like 100 of them.
Any questions for the applicant here?
No.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak to this? I'd entertain a motion, go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any further questions for Dave or staff on this item? Looks, from the top of this, it looks a little drier area than the other one we just looked at, so maybe not as many groundwater issues there. But I don't have any questions about this besides it's.
It's very nice.
Yeah, it looks nice and conforms to what the general plan is there.
I hope our residents are noticing these are two approvals on higher density. Not, 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 no, I worded that wrong.
I know.
Well, once that came out of my mouth, I'm like, no, that went bad. Larger lot sizes rather than higher density.
Okay. Anything else for staff? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ordinance amending the official zoning map for the Orchard subdivision based on the following findings and conditions. The proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation and zoning map conditions. The applicant meets the city's zoning requirements and construction standards. That the applicant address any red lines, that the land be set aside for future rail expansion based on direction provided by the Spanish Fork City Engineering Department.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. A roll call vote, Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Oiler?
Yes.
Item D is approved. Takes us to new business. I think, I did neglect to mention the importance of the rail area there. Hardworking, appreciate everybody's work on that, but that does have some funding attached to it. Some real viable future that might get rid of one of the rail lines in Spanish and consolidate here. So appreciate the applicant taking that into concept too because that's a big deal if it gets done. Okay, David, a proposed amend to the Eagle Haven preliminary plat.
Well, to give Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is about as easy as it gets, in my opinion. This project was approved as an amendment to a previously approved master plan development just earlier this year. And subsequent to that approval, the applicant has decided that they want to break the new part of the project into a couple of phases. And that's really what this is about. So this comes to you with recommendations from the DRC and the Planning Commission for Approval so that the applicant can develop one phase of four lots with the plan to develop a second phase of three lots at some future date in the project. Incidentally, just to point this out, this is also in the R-115 zone. So we go years without approving subdivisions that are zoned R-115 and three in one form or another on an agenda. Bizarre happenstance there. But when it comes to phasing plans, they are important. And I think it's really a technical matter of simply making sure that each phase can stand alone. So we never assume that a project is going to proceed to full construction on a timeline that works for everybody. Instead, we really do look at them as if they need to exist as it goes from one phase to the other, potentially forever. And I appreciate the applicant working with the staff and the Development Review Committee coming up with an approach here that seems to function well, in my opinion, or will function well. Just to make sure that the necessary infrastructure does get built and that opportunities are available to see to it, that future needs are satisfied with the proposed phasing. And it's that simple. So the recommendation is to approve an amended master plan development for the Eagle Haven subdivision based on the finding in the staff report and those four conditions.
Any questions for Dave on this one? This is not in the public hearing section of the meeting because you've already had a public hearing for this, right?
Do we have the plot map on the next slide?
I just kind of blew over that, sorry. And now this is advancing kind of slow. Thanks. So incidentally, Maple Mountain High School is to the north and west, just slightly, of the subject property. I shouldn't have assumed everybody knew where this was. This is Spanish Fork Parkway.
Yeah, we don't need to zoom too far out.
Right there.
Jesse's house right there.
This is the Shane slide. Sometimes we skip over that a little bit quicker. But this is the neighborhood Walmart, Maple Mountain High School, so.
Dave, this is kind of the first property that's east of Spanish Fork Parkway. They'll be asked to do the development of the sidewalks and the road widening as that development goes in, right? So it's not going to.
It's already done.
It's already done.
It's a south property, yeah.
Yeah, isn't there a property developed to the south of there right now?
So the majority of what we see right here is already developed.
It's already in?
The original Eagle Haven development stopped right here.
Oh, okay.
But with that, all of this street network here was constructed. So coming back and adding seven lots by way of amending the original approval is pretty easy. And now the applicant would like to move forward to develop these four lots here in what would be the next phase. And then these three lots over here, that would include a lot for an existing home there at some future date.
So I have two questions. The first is, if this will work. So when we first originally did it, wasn't there a road here coming through? I thought I remember a road going through there. And I look back and I thought I thought there was.
He didn't want a road. He didn't want a road through either one, either place.
Right. I know that there was the one on the side, but I thought there was two.
The road network that we see here is identical to what was approved in April of this year.
What you're remembering is preliminary, a concept that had, instead of the road that is there on the east or on the west, it was on the east in some of the original concepts. Again, providing, as I mentioned in a previous, with a previous development, providing for that connectivity between subdivisions. But with that house, there's a house that exists today, that there is a home there right now, a historical home. They would have, their driveway was a long one right out here to the old 2550 Spanish Fork Parkway. And that home is being preserved with this and eventually will have a smaller lot. But this road concept was abandoned and put here to give this frontage to a road, driveway access from a road, still providing for the connectivity between these, you know, this subdivision, this property here and what is this subdivision today. So, yeah, that.
That brings up my second question. So my second question is, so we're talking about, you know, plot or, sorry, phase one being to the right. My clicker stopped working. And then phase two being to the left, which has the existing home in it. Wouldn't it, and maybe I don't understand, but it's already half or done. The house is there. I know they've done a lot of improvements, the development. They've added a garage. They've made it, they made it a better looking product. Wouldn't it make sense to make that a part of phase one since it's already done-ish?
I think, yeah, I think that's worth speculating on. We're simply responding to the proposal that the applicant's given us.
Okay, so maybe that's a question for the applicant there, here. Yeah, perfect. He can come up here to the mic.
Thank you, David.
Jerry Carroll, and this is part of phase of Eagle Haven existing subdivision. Reason we broke this up is two reasons. We came in hopefully to get this on by summer. But now that we're into this latter part of the year, our best scenario is probably spring for these four lots. And even further on the other because of the weather and things of that nature. So we broke it up so we could actually get in to work on these four lots and start building them. And by not having a massive amount of other work to be done, which requires the street.
That road.
And so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Quick question. I don't know, let me see your clicker. I'm just looking at those two lots where the front is extremely small. Is that?
Sure driveway.
Yeah, how will that work? Is that abnormally?
No, they're not abnormal.
Okay, it's just look, it looks abnormal because of the lots are bigger. Okay.
A little bit on them.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
I would disagree. I think they are abnormal, which is part of the reason why this was worked through as a master plan development. We often have knuckle, knuckle types of lots. But I think this is other, varying from our standard. This was allowed and approved as a part of the master plan development. So we considered that there's a buildable envelope that they have, which pushes back so that they have a buildable space there. But in terms of frontage in an R-115 zone, this is significantly less frontage than they would be allowed typically. But the master plan development tool was used to allow for that. I think, and I may be speaking out of turn here, but I think that was, this was one of the reasons that the applicant would have chosen to employ that tool rather than having it be a straight-up subdivision.
And just maybe for a little bit of, even just scale, of the two lots that we're talking about, the one on the east has 35 feet of actual frontage right at.
Oh, okay.
The cul-de-sac, which is not a ton, but 35 feet, so the driveway is 24 feet. You still have room on each side of that. And it quickly gets wider to where we would measure the front setback typically. There's more than 60 feet there, which quickly also gets much bigger than that. It's almost a 20,000 square foot lot is why.
It's a big lot.
Yeah. It's a little bit deceptive. The lot next to that to the west has a little bit more frontage. It's about 52 feet of frontage right at the street. And then at the front setback gets up to about 65 feet. It's just over 15,000 square feet. So if we were, if this was an R-18 subdivision and it were scaled that way, then.
That would be a problem.
It'd be different. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a tight driveway from property line to property line, which isn't easy.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate you sharing those numbers, Dave.
Dave, what would be the timeline, or I don't know if it's the best you or the developer here, is that stub road, right, obviously eventually has to be built even for the existing house to be able to be occupied, I assume. What is the mechanism to make sure that that happens? Because that's an important part of that phase, right, is to make sure that we have that sub road?
So with the approved, so there are a couple of different things that could happen here based on the, actually the fourth condition we think sets up a good opportunity. Should, for example, the property to the north to develop before that last phase with three lots and this project develops, conceivably, that connection could be made with the development to the north. With the easement that is part of that condition provided to the city, then that developer could make those improvements so they'd have a viable street connection and maybe utility connections as well. They would be entitled to a pioneering agreement and reimbursement for those improvements. If they got out ahead of Mr. Carroll or anybody else developing that phase standalone. If that phase were to be developed standalone with the approval of a final plat and in preparation for that being recorded, there would be a bond or a guarantee provided for improvements like that. And either they would be constructed by a developer or at some point in time, the city would use those funds to complete the improvements.
And the reason for that notion is because when it was, the south part of Eagle Haven was proposed, right, that was a little bit of a scary scenario with that road, the way it was constructed, going right through essentially that house. If somebody made a, you know, a boo-boo and didn't pay attention to the road, because that never happens, right? But, you know, it's one of those things that I think is very important to this development to make sure that that road is there, so.
That road, actually in this proposal, I think we have set up to, we have dedicated the easement and also gave right-of-way, deeded the right-of-way.
Perfect.
For that road. So it is, basically on approval, what I'm not wrong, David, is it will be an actual street at some point because it's deeded.
I don't think we're asking that it be deeded, that this, this road be deeded. I think we're getting an easement, we're proposing an easement with this phasing plan. The dedication would come for the right-of-way of Spanish Fork Parkway to the west.
Right.
Okay. So I, I think this is a very critical part of, of the request, to understand the applicant's wishes to develop these, these four lots to the east. This would, in essence, be one lot, and, and we would have an easement that would allow for us to construct a road here if the applicant, if somebody to the north wanted it sooner, and if the applicant wasn't doing anything in, in time for that. There is a provision in the, in the plat that would allow for this, this home to access their driveway from this direction, no longer from Spanish Fork Parkway. And I think this, this was the subject of significant discussion with the DRC, and I think also with the Planning Commission. I don't want to speak for Mr. Carroll, he can, he can correct anything that I say, or add to anything that I'm going to suggest here. But the reason, maybe a reason, a main reason why this lot is not included in the subdivision is because it would then be required to do that work today. And I think the applicant is looking for funds from the first part of the project to help finish off the latter part of it. But if, if he chooses not to, or if he sells it to somebody else and they, they develop later, or if somebody buys this home and thinks that they're buying a home with, you know, two acres or whatever that, that is left to be, there's a note that will be on the, recorded with that property, that easement will be delineated there, and we would have the ability to, to put that road in, should they not. I understand that it's Mr. Carroll's intention to do this completely, but simply to do it in phases, so it might be the first four lots, and within a certain amount of time, not too far, hence, he would do the last three. I don't know if you want to add anything or take anything away there?
I think you pretty much wrapped it in a nutshell, because we're, we're interested in getting the other lots with houses started on them, and since we can't even in next year possibly start that. We will be a temporary entrance to the 300th Street, 300 South, for the house, and eliminate the entrance coming off of Spanish Fork Parkway. So we can begin that a little quicker by doing that. I want to get all the frontage down, the wall, the rest of the street, the irrigation, landscaping, et cetera.
So when you, when you say you're going to build something on that 300 South Street, are you going to, are you going to build it, in essence, where this roadway is, or are you intending to build it inside of the property line?
Where the easement would be.
Yeah, so it would be natural there, where it will be in the future as well.
Correct. And it will be a temporary type situation. There's noted on the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Isn't somebody living in that house now?
Yes, I do live in that house now.
Any other questions for Mr. Carroll and staff?
No.
I'd like to mention in my council comments how excited we are about Spanish Fork Parkway here. I know we'd be zooming out a little bit here, but in the coming weeks, your future residents of the subdivision will be able to get on that road and head straight past Mr. Argyle's subdivision and down towards Lowe's and the whole, the whole Canyon Creek area down there, so, right? I mean, I'm just connecting excitement here.
Let's do that, let's just say it next week. Just do it.
Okay. Next week, there's a crossing of a huge railroad on Spanish Fork Parkway that will be...
Plant the flag.
Be great.
Next week.
Cut, cuts 10 minutes for me to get...
Chris wants to plant the flag more than anybody. Let's just plant it, right?
Yeah, we're going. Stones throw away from your subdivision, but it's on Spanish Fork Parkway, so.
That's it.
You had to mention it. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Location.
Yeah, we appreciate it, it's great location.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions for, for the applicants or staff, I would entertain a motion on item 8A of new business.
I move to approve the proposed preliminary plat amendment for a master plan development based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Finding that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation and zoning map, conditions that the applicant meets the city's zoning requirements and construction standards, that the applicant addresses any red lines, that the applicant complies with the standard setback requirements of the R-115 zone, that the applicant dedicates the right-of-way for Spanish Fork Parkway, dedicates a public easement for future 2580 East for roadway and utilities, which will bisect the property as it goes north, and that a notice of development obligations be placed on the remaining property, which is shown as future lots 20, 21, and 22, which would indicate an approved preliminary plat for the property, and that there are development obligations, including building that street. I need a drink.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Item 8A is approved.
I think we might need to let the note say that he needed a drink of water.
Yeah, you can take that out. All right. Item 8B is 300 East Waterline Replacement Change Order for PNL Construction. Mr. Chris Thompson.
Mayor, I move that John Waters be nominated for employee of the quarter, as he has sat here for two and a half hours...
Is this the item you were here for, Mr. Waters? Well, yeah, we could at least have him get up, goodness.
I think we need to probably take a half hour discussing this to merit his time.
I think...
Giving you some M&amp;M's, Mr. Waters, keep it going.
Okay. I think he's going to be kinder to me from now on when we meet, realize, realizing that some, some nights it goes long. This is, this is a project that is coming out of quite a few water main breaks we've had in a concentrated area that are really concerning to us. Also, we have plans to, to put what's called a microseal on 300 East next year, and with these water main breaks that's come to our attention, we really need to replace some water lanes in that area. And, and we try to plan so that we replace water line at least a year before we do a road resurface. And the reason is, we like the trenches to settle out over a winter time, and then when we come in right before we do a microseal, we level out the road and then we seal it up. And so, just north of where these breaks occurred, we have a really good contractor working, just finishing up a water line replacement project. We checked the bids, they're very good, they're some of the Lowe's that we've had in quite some time. And we really like this contractor, and they've indicated to us they can just, with the same bid, that they have given a bid quantities and bid amounts that they've given us on the project, that they're working on now, just continue and, and, and do this project. So that being said, we would propose that we get on this, do it now. There will be some temporary asphalt put down, but then when we come in and do our project, we'll put new asphalt in and fix the trenches and then resurface the road. So we would really highly recommend this change order be awarded on, on the 6 North project, so that we're not fixing water mains in the middle of the night anymore, like Councilman Argyle referred to. We've, we've had a few in this area.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris about this? Mr. Waters concurs, I take it, if he's here.
Would you like to come and speak to it a little bit?
I want to.
Yeah, I want to.
After two and a half hours, we want you to.
Come on.
He wants to talk about water.
Tell us a little bit about this water main.
Get him in the record.
If he doesn't come in and play a minute, he doesn't get on the books.
That's right.
I don't cuss. Anyway, I'm John Waters. So this water line has actually been on our hit list to replace for a couple of years. We just haven't had the money nor the time to do it. Before, about a month ago, we had had nine breaks on that water line, so that's why it was on our hit list. Since the last three weeks, we're up to 12 breaks on this water line. When it's broke, we've had two at a time break, and it's, it's right on a state road, so we've had to close 4th North down, and it, we flooded a house out. I shouldn't say we flooded a house out, a house got flooded out by the water main break, and we haven't even got to the time of year where we start to have breaks, which will be in about another month to two months, months when our typical water mains start breaking.
Is that because of freezing?
Yep, the ground starts shifting and, and the pipes won't, won't move, and will break, especially if they're weak. So typical times are in the fall and in spring for water main breaks. So if we're having these kind of breaks right now, we can't wait till spring to replace them.
John, can you describe the process of fixing a break? What, what the employees have to do?
Well, usually they don't happen at a convenient time, so...
Friday, Thursday?
Friday, usually it's our holiday, like Thanksgiving, or Christmas, or something like that, it seems like it's inevitable. But it's a matter of shutting the line down to where it's almost shut off, but people can still have water. Digging the asphalt out, the road out, five to six feet deep, possibly anywhere from 20 feet down to maybe 10 feet in diameter, depending on if we haven't, if we're having to follow a water line one way or another, because sometimes you just don't dig right down on top of one, and there's a lake, you end up having to search for it. So it can be quite extensive. Sometimes we end up having to replace a length of pipe, and we go pressure it back up, which has happened in this instance three times, it's broke downstream from it. So we've had to go back and shut it off and start all over again. And when you get, you know, 12 hours in, and you're looking at another 12 hours because you're starting all over again, that's pretty difficult. We, we got a small crew. Luckily, we've had other departments that's been able to come and help us, because we've just been wore out. So it's really quite critical that we get this done now, rather than later. Like I say, we're just starting in the break season, so. Anything else?
Thank you, John. Good description, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris, John referenced that it's not cheap to do this stuff. Talk about where, where these funds do come from to replace water lines.
Yeah, so we, we typically do several blocks a year of water line replacement, but we've had a large amount of growth, the north end of town, industrial growth, which requires fire flows that kind of diverted a lot of the water funds up there to, to make the pipes on 300 West and, and 2700 North, some of those areas, bigger so that we can meet the fire flow demands up there. And so, you know, we are getting a little bit behind on our water replacement projects, but we, we have some cash reserves that we feel like could be used to do this project.
Perfect.
Do you impact fees at all? Are they able to be used for the widening projects that you described? Yeah, yeah, but they just come in over time, so, so we front the money and then we get paid back over time.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I'd entertain a motion for item 8B.
Move to approve the 300 East Waterline Replacement Change Order for PNL Construction.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler, a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
8B is approved, takes us to 8C, Resolution Approving Interlocal Cooperation Agreement with Salem City for Five Line Case Management System. Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Thank you.
Come again.
Mayor and Council, in the recent year or two, we've been trying to develop our own case management system. We'd previously contracted with Utah County, but they ended that relationship. And so we started a five-line build. Traditionally, we've been sharing that with Salem City, and Salem has indicated they want to continue to do that. And so we provided an agreement here where they will share in the costs that, for the one year that we are with the Utah County, they'll pay their pro-rata share of that, they'll pay their pro-rata share of the startup costs, and of the ongoing annual subscription fees for this. The software's turned out to be a really big benefit for us. We were able to take what was kind of clunky, you know, designed for Utah County that does felony prosecution, and we streamlined it down to fit our needs, which is the misdemeanor prosecution. And it's something that's useful and can be used by other law enforcement agencies like Salem. So they've indicated they'd like to join us. This agreement will have them pay their fair share of those costs. Any questions?
I made a joke about Salem and Payson earlier, I regret it. Salem's cooperating with us here, I apologize.
You'll have to tell them that.
Yeah, they're watching. Any questions for Vaughn on this?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve the Resolution Approving Interlocal Cooperation Agreement with Salem City for Five, File Vine Case Management System.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Cardon, a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item 8C is approved, takes us to nine.
Motion to adjourn to work session.
Motion by Councilman Argyle to adjourn to work session.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon, a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate it.